Please call the order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting dated April 12th, 2018. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hessag, absent. Kinnon, Kinnon Sarachi, absent. Ms. Becareta, absent. Mr. Peason?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Here.
Committeeman Delcor, present. And Chairman Leponti?
I am here, thank you. Next, our business is deposition of minutes, which I do not believe there are any. And then we'll go to resolutions, which there are none.
There is one.
Oh, there's one, yep.
One added.
Yes, one added late. It's in your packet. It was...
Hillsborough Gardens Association.
Yes, Hillsborough Gardens Association. Where's my notes?
This was, to refresh you, remember, this was the clubhouse?
Right, clubhouse, right. Do you have the file for that, David?
17 PB 14 MSP. Preliminary and final major site plan approval. Hillsborough Gardens Associates LLC, Palm Road, Block 15316.
Right. It was emailed to you, and then there also is a copy on your desk there to familiarize. Mr. Delcor has arrived at 7:35. We have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. We have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Scoboe. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yeah, just for the record, I think only a certain amount of people can vote on this, right?
Those eligible?
Mr. Wagner, Ms. Forrest, Mr. Weinstein, Vice Chairman Julian, Committeeman Delcor, and Chairman Leponti.
Right. Yes, everyone. Everyone is not, Mr. Peason, Ms. Becarina, and Mr. Scoboe. Correct. Go ahead.
I think it goes up to Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Thank you. Committeeman Delcor?
No, I'm staying.
Thank you. And Chairman Leponti?
Yes. Okay, so now we're, you know, planning board business, no special committee report.
Mr. Chairman? Sorry.
Jumping in on me. Go ahead.
Always late at this.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry.
Hillsborough Estates?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
There are still some issues to work out. This is the conservation easement.
Gotcha.
And they're still putting some things together for us, so their time of the decision was running out at the end of this month, so they've granted an extension to May 31st, so to give them more time.
Okay. Do we need to vote on that, or it's just?
No.
No, okay. Special, I should look to the updated agenda, so I'll get rid of the green one and go to the yellow one. Is there any business from the floor, not on today's agenda? Seeing none. Consideration of ordinances? None, right, David?
None.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go to our first public hearing. It is Dr. Joseph Martins, File 17 PB 15 SV, Block 202, Lots 8 and 801, 132 and 134 Hillsborough Road, applicant seeking minor subdivision approval and multiple C-bulk variances to subdivide property. Original subdivision deed not found within county records, with proposed Lot 8 to contain approximately 1.016 existing cats-only instructure to remain, and proposed Lot 8.01 to contain 9.604 acres for a new single-family dwelling, driveway, pole barn, and horse barn on property in the AG Agricultural Residential Zoning District, EC review dated 3/26/18. Counselor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanfrith, 3000 Hadley Road, South Plainfield, New Jersey, appearing on behalf of the applicant.
Pull the microphone close, please.
Yeah. Better? Yep.
By way of background, this property was, in fact, subdivided in 1965 as a result of an application by a Daniel Ludwig, and I would like to put into evidence a stamped approved minor partition by the Planning Board of Hillsborough Township in 1965 as a one. The subdivision that we are seeking this evening is basically to ratify that subdivision from 1965. From 1965 forward, the properties that are in question have been carried on the tax maps of the township of Hillsborough as two separate properties. Unfortunately, there is no record of the subdivision in Somerset County, and therefore we need a subdivision approval so that we can file subdivision deeds to really ratify what was done in 1965. I have Mr. Martins as a witness, as well as Mr. Ford, who was the engineer who prepared the subdivision plan. My testimony in this will be fairly brief, but I just want to have Mr. Martins provide to you the background of how we got here today and what we're trying to do.
Sure, let's swear, Mr. Martins.
Raise your hand, please, sir. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and the rest of the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State full name, spelling your last name.
Joseph S. Martins, M-A-R-T-I-N-S.
Any address?
36 Torbett Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey, 08844.
Thank you.
Dr. Martins, when you just hold the microphone very close to your mouth when you speak, please. Thank you.
Mr. Martins, you're the applicant in this matter, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and where do you live?
36 Torbett Road, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Okay, and what is your occupation?
I'm a veterinarian.
And your office is here in Hillsborough?
Yes, it is.
Okay. In 2016, did you sign a contract to buy, actually signed two contracts, to buy the two properties that are in question?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And after you signed a contract to buy the two properties in question, did the attorney who was representing you in the real estate transaction conduct a title search?
Yes.
And can you indicate to the board what that title search revealed?
Title search revealed that there was, that there was one communal deed for both these properties, but that they were being taxed as two properties.
Okay. And you say there was one, there was not a separate deed for each of the two properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
And the two properties in the tax records of Hillsborough Township are carried as two separate lots?
That's correct.
Okay. And when you signed the contracts to purchase the property, you actually, in fact, signed two separate contracts to buy two separate distinct pieces of property?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and unfortunately, without a subdivision, you can't do that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and just for the board's ratification, one of the properties has a, it's got structures on it?
Yes.
And can you indicate to the board what those structures are?
Yes, has a cats-only inn, which is a cat boarding facility, a little detached garage, and kind of an old little barn on it.
Okay, and that facility was approved by this, or by the zoning board of Hillsborough Township approximately 13 years ago, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and then the rest of the property is vacant and formerly under assess, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and if the subdivision were to be approved, the cat boarding facility would remain?
Remain.
Okay, and what would happen to the 9.6 acres?
I would build a house on it.
For your own use?
For my own private use, yes.
Okay, thank you, I have no further questions.
Anything, David, engineers, anything from the desk? Okay. Nope. Any open to public? Motion open to public?
Some of.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any questions for this witness based on his testimony? None? Okay, next witness. Thank you, Mr. Martins.
Mr. Ford. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you swear the whole truth, the rest of the truth, so help you God? Yes, I do.
State full name, proud?
Michael Kenneth Ford, F-O-R-D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, licensed professional engineer and planner, appeared before this board.
Will accept your qualifications.
A few times before.
[laughing].
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ford, your office was responsible for preparing the subdivision plan, which is the subject of this application?
Correct.
Okay, and you heard the testimony of the applicant, and also my statements concerning the history of this property, is that correct?
Yes.
And in reviewing the records of the history of this property, you were able to, with the help of Mr. Martins, find an old subdivision map that was stamped by the municipality approving the subdivision, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
And when you reviewed that map, was there any lot data table, zone chart, or any other additional information on that plan?
No.
Okay. Now, the two lots that we are seeking to subdivide, can you indicate what, well, first of all, what is the zoning in that area?
Currently, it's the AG zone. Agricultural.
Okay. And the two lots that we are seeking to subdivide, what are the size of them?
Just over one acre and 9.6 acres.
Okay, and do you know what the minimum lot area requirements are for the AG zone?
Yes, it's 10 acre minimum.
Okay, so for the lot in, on which he intends to build, the Martins intend to build a house, we would need a variance for lot area under today's standards, because today's standards are 10 acres and that lot is 9.6 acres, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other lot is also the one acre lot, and did you compare or review the old file, the old map with the application that is before the board this evening?
Yes.
And the lot lines are identical to what was approved in 1965? We're not changing lot lines or moving any lot lines?
No, we're not.
Okay. Now, in conjunction with this application, you have an exhibit, I think you marked it A1?
This is A2.
A2, okay. Can you just briefly point out to the board what the existing conditions are and basically the parameters of the two lots?
Okay, what I put up on the easel on the wall is the minor subdivision application plan that was submitted as part of the application package, and we have simply superimposed an aerial image of the existing conditions over that plan, and I'll just highlight for the board. Hillsborough Road, the cats-only inn is the one acre parcel, which is in the middle of the property, and then the remaining lands, the 9.6 acres, runs around the cats-only-in one acre parcel, and as you can see, virtually the entire property beyond where the cats-only-in is currently in agricultural use. The Martins would intend to continue to do that beyond the areas needed for the proposed single-family house.
And, Mr. Ford, can you briefly describe the surrounding land uses around this property?
This is surrounded in total by Lot 7, which is one of the Van Nuys parcels that was set into farmland preservation. So that's preserved farmland, and that also holds true for the property to the east of this site. And this site is along Hillsborough Road, just to the west of where the bypass, signalized intersection is, but it's in an area where there is no public water or sewer.
Okay, so when the house is built, it will be built on a well, with a well and a septic system, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've already done the soil testing for the proposed new septic system. That was witnessed by your health department staff.
Mr. Ford, have you had an opportunity to review a report that was generated in conjunction with this subdivision application dated April 5, 2018, by Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, and are there any comments in that report that we would like to discuss with the board?
No, there's actually just, I'll say, two comments we'd like to discuss with the board. We, certainly, all the issues and requests to comply with a specific plot and grading plan, stormwater management, tree mitigation, that would all be done as part of the building permit application, should the board act favorably to create the lot again. The one, I guess really, two questions we had for the board, there's on page three or four, Mr. White points out correctly that this minor subdivision, by virtue of being a technical minor subdivision, is subject to your shade tree ordinance, which requires the planting of trees along the road, that would be along Hillsborough Road. The applicant would comply with that request, but we, what we'd like to suggest to the board is that a waiver of that requirement may be appropriate in this case, since it's in a rural area. You can see that there is some vegetation along the perimeter of this tract, but basically it's all farmed, but there are existing trees along Hillsborough Road to the west of the cats-only-in. The only real frontage that doesn't have any shade trees, if you will, is just to the east of the cats-only-in, and there's actually a nice sizable tree directly in front of the existing structure that serves as the cats-only-in. So what we would suggest is that a waiver may be suitable to be granted for this application for the planting of those more uniform, symmetrical shade trees every 25 to 40 feet that you would see in a typical residential dwelling might not be appropriate in this case. So that's one question for the board, and the applicant would agree to do whatever the board would decide in that regard. The second question we'd like to suggest to the board is there's been a request by the Environmental Commission, as well as the professionals, to submit a request to DEP for a freshwater wetland letter of interpretation. There, as you see, the property is entirely disturbed today. There's, on the DEP website, GeoWeb, there's an area of suspected wetlands at the extreme rear portion of this property. Most of it is actually on the neighbors, just to our south, that portion of Lot 7. Again, we would comply with the board's request or the suggestion to submit an LOI request. The one thing we'd like to suggest to the board is, as I'm sure you've heard before, there's no time limit on how long DEP has to rule on that, and the applicant's proposed construction activity is the house is over 300 feet from that rear property line, the barns are over 200 feet from their rear property line, so substantially clear of the suspected wetland area, and they would like to have the ability to file for a building permit application and proceed with construction, albeit at their own risk, while that LOI application is being reviewed by the EP. So that's, I'll say, another decision for the board, we say subject to, but we'd like the permission to be able to continue with the applications and pursue, proceed with the construction of the dwelling. That's our primary focus, is the residential dwelling.
Mr.?
That was it.
Mr. Ford, there are also other outside agencies that we have to obtain approvals from, and we have no problem complying with those, and applications are in fact pending with some of those agencies at the present time.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and also, very briefly, you did with Dr. Martins appear before the Environmental Commission on this matter, is that correct?
Correct, right.
And there were some recommendations, but the Environmental Commission did, in fact, act favorably upon this application?
Yeah, I think there was supportive, they made some really good suggestions about the agricultural farmlet operation, that is, you know, directing roof runoff from the barns in an area that's not where the horses would be, you know, manure, common good farm management practices. And Mr. Martins would agree to do all those things as part of, you know, his farming operation.
And lastly, there was a report rendered by the chief fire marshal concerning the driveway and providing adequate safe access for fire apparatus, and we agree to comply with that, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Okay. Mr. White, is there anything else?
No, no.
David?
Nothing.
In the plan there, you, I see the house and the horse-riding stable and the barn. Is that area around that all going to be maybe, Mr. Martins may have to answer this quickly, but you're talking about maintaining the existing farming activity around it, so is the lawn going to be accessible to that, or is it just the back of the property that they want to continue to?
The lawn for...
Well, they have a horse barn with hay, and then they have a riding stable, so, and they show a small area of grass around the house. Is the rest of the property all going to be farmed, is that?
It's going to remain a farmland. At least five acres will be farmed, so is staying farmland assessment.
Okay.
And some of the agricultural area could be converted to pasture for the horses and fenced, continued agricultural use.
And in that potential wetland area, are they actively farming that area now, or is it just that green spot that you're talking there, kind of between the two fields?
The, we actually show it on the plan, the suspected 50-foot buffer with that is farmed now.
It's farmed now.
Right, and you could continue to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have some questions, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to tie up a couple loose ends in terms of the Environmental Commission's report, and I don't remember talking about stormwater management plan the night we were there with the Environmental Commission, is that correct? I see it on Mazur's report now.
Yeah, I think what we said then is, once we, you know, if we can create the lot, and we've shown schematically where the house and the barn and the rotting arena would go, once the, should the board act favorably on the subdivision, we would immediately start to prepare those details as part of the building permit application, which would include a stormwater management analysis coupled with the grading and, you know, drainage, plot grading and drainage plan for the, all those different structures.
So would that, that be reviewed by Mazur then at that point, that management plan?
More than likely, the township's engineering department would defer to us.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, I think that's a good way to, somebody should review that plan.
Yeah.
At some point. And then some of the other items that came up at the Environmental Commission, some of the requests was to provide a data search for the rare species, any endangered species.
We'd agree to do that, correct?
Documentation, or the DRCC, if there's anything relative to applicability.
Correct.
Correct? And then you talked about washing from the horses, well, did we say that? Did we mention that, about the washing of horses in the barn diverted to a vegetative area?
Correct.
Okay, so that's something you would consider?
Oh, yeah, all the, all the items that were suggested in the Environmental Commission report, we'd comply with. I think the only thing we really wanted to talk about was just the timing of the freshwater wetland LOI. That was it, that was it.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, I mean, I don't have a problem with that, you're just, that's at your own risk, though. I mean, whatever DEP comes back with, they come back with.
Okay.
Right? So, okay, that's all I have, thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, anyone else? Okay, open to public. Motion open to public for this witness?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ford? Seeing none. Very uninspiring, getting anybody up today. Okay, so, from a, I guess, Mr. Mazur, is there anything else that you want to, or Mazur, Mr. Maskey? Is there anything else that you want to bring up to?
Mr. Mazur, long gone.
Yeah, Mr. Mazur, long gone. Mr. Maskey, as far as the deeds and on the variances or anything like that.
No, just as a summary, so the proposed Lot 8, which is the lot in the front with the existing, the cat motel, they're all basically existing non-conformities, so if the board chose to approve the subdivision, it'd be a variance for lot area, lot width setback, minimum front yard, side yard, and impervious coverage, that's on the existing, for the existing buildings, and also a side yard variance for one of the sheds on the property. The lot in the back would require a minimum lot area variance and a, also a minimum lot width at setback. And there would be one waiver that's being requested for the provision of street trees, shade trees.
So I guess I was going to bring up, so we could ask them, in lieu of that, could supply funds to the shade tree commission or something to that effect?
Okay.
I mean, I'm familiar with the property, it is pretty rural. I guess street trees, in my opinion, might not look like out of place, though it's up to the board, you know, I think that to maintain the look of the farmland, it might look nicer without trees going down the road.
Mr. Chairman, I travel that area, I would agree wholeheartedly.
Yes. So maybe we would make a motion, and part of that thing would too, and then those trees would be donated to the tree commission, where our township could plant them where they're more needed?
We have no objection to that.
Okay. All right, so, and the LOI would be on your risk, correct?
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the variance as stated with the provisions we just discussed.
Chairman, I'll move that with the, as you noted, with the tree mitigation to fund, as well as the additional time to allow them to commence work in advance of getting the LOI.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Ms. Forrest?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Maskey?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Committeeman Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman Leponti?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor.
You'll note, I didn't ask Mr. Ford if he prepared the original application in 1965.
I don't think he was in town. [laughing]. Good luck, Dr. Martins, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll go to our next order of business. Let me just make sure I get it here quiet, everything down here. Sorry. US 206 Hillsborough Self-Storage LLC, reference REA Self-Storage, File 05 PB 24 SRV, 2018 Extension Request, applicant is seeking a three-year extension of preliminary and final major site plan approval granted for the application, O5 PB 24 SRV, resolution dated July 12 of 2007, on the property in the HS Highway Service Zoning District, formerly the I-1 Zoning District, following I-2 Zoning District standards due to highway approach. Counselor?
Great, good evening, thank you very much. For the record, my name is Glenn Pantel.
Just people who love.
Yes, for the record, my name is Glenn Pantel. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Drinker Biddle, having the pleasure of representing this evening the applicant, US 206 Hillsborough Self-Storage LLC, on the request that you accurately described a moment ago for extension of a preliminary and final site plan approval for, of course, a self-storage facility on the property located at Block 65, Lot 12.02, formerly Lot 12.01 in Hillsborough Township. The request is for the grant of an extension to June 30 of 2019. Under the Permit Extension Act, the vesting period under the prior, previously granted approval was valid until June 30 of 2016. Under the municipal land use law, the board may grant up to three one-year extensions, which would take us to June 30 of 2019. Since we're so close to June 30 of 2018 already, I thought it made no sense to request an extension to June 30 of 2018. This is a, as you'll see from testimony, and actually, I know it may not be quite typical in connection with a request for extension of site plan approval to present some live testimony, but I thought it would be in order unless the board doesn't, not inclined to hear that, but I thought it would be in order to present briefly our architect, to show what the board, to show the board what this project looks like, i.e., we have an attractive elevation and rendering. When this project was put together, there was a lot of attention to detail, to have an office-type of appearance, and it really has a Class A look to it. We also have our project engineer, Jeff Morris, who was involved with the original application, to explain to the board how the site works and how it's totally compatible with possible future expansion of the Route 206 right-of-way and the widening of the trestle. I think probably a lot of members of the board are probably familiar with the location of this site on the north end of the township, surrounded on the north... of this site on the north end of the township, surrounded on the north, next to northbound Route 206 on its westerly side, there's a conrail trestle running above Route 206, which is on the southerly side of the site. There's actually conrail tracks on the easterly side of the site and a vacant and commercial nursery property on the northerly side of the site. It's a site that's kind of just tucked away a bit, it's not really suitable for your typical type of retail development that you would see along other parts of Route 206 in Hillsborough Township. In fact, it's somewhat of an unusual situation, too, in that the applicant, this is not a case where simply a site plan approval was obtained, and nothing really has happened since the date of the site plan approval in terms of additional permitting and approvals. In this particular case, actually, a very substantial investment has been made by the applicant and his predecessor to obtain not only all other permits necessary to obtain a building permit for the project, but a building permit actually was issued for the project in 2009. But due to economic circumstances recognized by the Permit Extension Act, the project was not actually built at that time. Indeed, the permit, in the Permit Extension Act, the legislature specifically found and declared that there exists a state of national recession, which has severely affected the real estate sector in New Jersey, that developers in New Jersey experienced an industry-wide decline as a result of the crisis, that the process for obtaining approvals can be difficult, time-consuming, and expenses, expensive, and that changes in the law can render these approvals, if expired or lapse, impossible to renew or obtain, and that many landowners and developers were seeing those life work destroyed due to the real estate crisis. Now, we have just recently come out of the protections afforded by the Permit Extension Act, and one of the drivers for a project like this is demand occasioned often by multifamily development in the surrounding area, and I don't need to tell members of this board that that's been happening in a major way in Hillsborough, especially some luxury multifamily apartments along Route 206 that I've seen going up over the past couple of years. It's that sort of development and those sorts of occupants that typically use this sort of facility, and not just for that matter in Hillsborough, obviously, Somerville has seen a huge resurgence of multifamily development, again triggering the need for this project. And, of course, you know, the client, my client who owns this project has a substantial track record of developing, actually, under the Hampshire name, public storage facilities throughout the state. So, this is a very experienced developer who is highly desirous of building a Class A facility, and I think you'll see from the rendering, I hope you would agree, that this is a pretty attractive project. In fact, in the resolution approving the application, the planning board found specifically, and I quote, "The building shall be constructed with brick face, stucco, and glass to make it more aesthetically pleasing." And a number of conditions were imposed that we will fully comply with, that were intended to promote and protect the public interest, including limitation on hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday, that there be no storage of hazardous or materials, or highly flammable materials, or of course, of weapons, that the project would be designed in a way to accommodate future Route 206 improvements, and you'll hear from our engineer, it does exactly that, that there would be a payment of $12,600 to the Township Sidewalk Fund, we're certainly prepared to continue to do that, that there would be provision of a cross-access easement to provide access, access to the site in the event that the DOT actually builds a jug handle at this location, which is conceivable. There's, I understand it's not funded, and it's not about to happen overnight, but could be funded, I've been told, 2019, possibly being built in 2021. In any case, as you'll see from our engineer's presentation, we actually do have in place a cross-access easement that would enable this property to have access via that jug handle if the state were to come in and close off the right-in, right-out driveway on Route 206. There was a requirement of payment of an affordable housing fee equal to 2% of equalized assessed value. We would estimate that payment at some $200,000, at 2% of equalized assessed value, and the applicant is certainly prepared to, to pay that prior to issuance of a new building permit. And then lastly, there was a condition to cooperate with the police and fire department to alleviate any radio communication issues following a radio test on the premises. So, the site now, as you've mentioned, is an HS zone, it allows commercial, allows business service establishments and personal service establishments. Obviously, this is the sort of facility that provides services to both businesses and person and individuals wanting to have put their goods in care of a self-storage facility. And incidentally, too, as, as recognized by the courts and I'm sure any number of planning words, this board may be familiar with self-storage applications, they tend to have very low traffic impacts, virtually no tractor-trailer traffic associated with them, all modes of delivery typically are cars or very, very small trucks, very, virtually no noise or air pollution issues. Essentially, they're totally different from the big box warehouses that you do see developed in some parts of Hillsborough and in other parts of the state. I actually do, have been involved, represent clients who develop a lot of those large boxes, see along the New Jersey Turnpike, and this is a totally different beast. So, that said, if there's no questions for, for me, what I'd like to do is have our architect present the architectural plan for you.
I'll ask a couple of questions, and maybe we can save your, I mean, obviously, the, Mr. Maskey, there's, there's no zoning that's changed at all, this is just an extension to, for building, right?
No, the zoning has changed from, I believe, it was I-2 to HS.
But doesn't create a variance.
However, the extension, the purpose of an extension is to continue whatever approvals were granted originally.
At that time.
So, if you grant the extension, the fact that the zone was changed doesn't really enter into the conversation.
Doesn't affect, right. And it sounds like the, the, and from what your testimony with preparing to bring your architect, the, the project is ready to go, it's just waiting on timing, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. We would get a new building permit, but it's ready to go, construction plans have already been prepared, they've already been approved by your construction department, sir.
So, everything that was, that was asked for, you're ready to, to deal with?
Yes, absolutely.
To add a body.
We'll comply with all the conditions of the prior approval.
So, essentially, if, you know, and I'm not sure what the trigger is that would ask your, make your client start, but it's just asking for a little buffer time to get the economy posture a little better, and then he's ready to go?
Yes.
In, in a nutshell.
Correct.
Any questions or anything?
As you probably jumped on the timing, though?
Sure.
So, of the extension from?
Right.
When it commences to when it?
I'll tell you when it commenced.
When it will extend until?
Exactly. The, the initial site plan resolution was July 2007, that was during the protection period afforded by the Permit Extension Act. So, under the Permit Extension Act, which was actually extended a couple of times, the protections under the municipal land use law ran to June 30 of 2016. And we are seeking three one-year extensions of that to June 30 of 2019. That is allowed by the municipal land use law for a final site plan approval. So, this would vest the approvals to June 30 of 2019, just a little more than a year from now.
So, a year from now, right.
Okay.
So, what, do you have to begin the project by then, or do you have to end it, or?
The intention would be to pull a building permit by then and be proceeding with, presumably proceeding with construction.
Because otherwise, he would have to come back and reapply. So, I mean, any problems in the day, I mean, I, I think that we, we could probably, I would make a motion possibly to accept his testimony and just approve an extension to June of 2019.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. Roll call?
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Fars?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Scoville?
Yes.
Mr. Weinske?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Minn Min Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman LaFawn?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Go get them.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any no correspondence? Our next scheduled meeting is April 26, 2018, which is a business meeting.
And there's nothing on the agenda, so you may want to cancel it.
So, those in favor of canceling that, that meeting?
Aye.
Oh, you jumped right on that one, didn't you? We have a second?
Cancel.
All right. All in favor?
Cancel.
Aye. So, the 26th meeting is canceled, so our nego, regular meeting will be May 3, and that will be the Apex.
Yes, it's, May 3 is a continuation of the Apex hearing, and just for your information, they have also requested that we reserve May 10 as well, which at the moment is empty. So, if you can't make one or both of those meetings, please let us know.
Watch the videos.
Watch the videos.
Get some popcorn, because it was long. Okay. So, Mr. Peason, you'll be off for the next few weeks. We'll see you in June.
We've narrowed the dates together.
May 3 and May 8.
May 10. May 3.
And May, May 3 and May 10, I'm sorry.
May 3 and May 10.
Thank you.
All right. I will enter a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Meeting on the 10th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, 8:10.